Thank you. Going to observe a moment of silence for the following. Mary Ann Lawrence, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Anthony Cordziel, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Harold Stalker, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District and Valerie Gordon, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Going to begin with a proclamation for school and ADAPAP counselors appreciation day. Throughout our school building, school and ADAPAP counselors have an impact on the district's students and families. They accepted this exceptional responsibility with commitment, dedication, and love. The school and ADAPAP counselors of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber and have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive quality services. To honor the school and ADAPAP counselors of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Paul Farfali, a president of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare February 27, 2023, as School and ADAPAP Counselor Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. Can I get a motion to accept motion, Mr. Marizio? Second from Mr. Crabtree. All in favor? Pose that is carried. Thank you very much.
Mr. Krilla, we'd like to recognize the school counselors and ADAPAP counselors that are here today. If you'd like to step forward, I think I have here Mrs. Heffron. We have here Mr. Will Whitiko. Christine Appy.
Okay, we're gonna begin with a budget update from Mr. Keegan, so you can come forward and take over. We have numbers and preliminary state aid runs from the governor's budget.
Good evening. Okay, tonight, we're gonna, as our president, Mr. Profalia mentioned, we're going to talk about the governor's budget proposal, our first look at school aid. We'll talk about our tax cap calculation, preliminary numbers, a little bit about our federal stimulus funds that have been so helpful for us. And then I think Dan's gonna jump in and give us a quick little update on Micron, and we'll close with the budget process timeline. So, so bear with me as I take you through a few, a few components of the budget, the governor's budget that I think are important to recognize. One that surprised me that the labor market is continuing to recover and, and we regained eighty-six point five percent of the job losses as of December 2022. I would have thought that we would have been closer to a hundred, but we're, we're obviously recovering from COVID. The tax collections for 2023, the, the year that we're in right now are expected to increase by about eleven percent to a total of one hundred and fifteen billion dollars or thirty-four billion higher than they were in 2021. They're expected to peak in the current year and fall in, in fiscal '24 as, as they anticipate a mild recession to begin. And the executive budget currently, right now, projects a $5.7 billion out-year budget gap in '25. So we had to keep that in mind as we, as we prepare our budget for the '23-'24 school year. Really happy to see, obviously, huge investment in mental health. The budget contains a billion-dollar event, investment in mental health services. Housing, creating eight hundred thousand new homes, ten billion, ten billion-dollar investment in affordable housing, so important for our families. Expanding access to affordable childcare, again, another important component of our whole school system is to know, make sure that families have good childcare, seven billion-dollar investment there. Improving outdoor areas, two hundred million dollars. Thirty-four billion dollar increase in, in Medicaid investment, which biggest investment in the state's history. Additional billion dollars to address healthcare needs, including five hundred million to invest in capital funding for hospitals. And then a thirty-four billion dollar increase in, in school aid. The largest increase ever, including two point seven billion for foundation aid to fully fund the formula, which we have been waiting for, for a long time and are very appreciative. It's been sixteen years for, for North, North Syracuse and districts like us. And then a continued commitment to invest in career and technical education. So, so looking at the, looking at the budget, the budget runs, and if you guys remember, each year we try to share, share information with you, and we approve, we look at the approved budget for the current year we're in. So that's that first column, approved budget '22-'23. The second co, uh, column is the executive budget. So the, the big number that jumps out for us here is nine point seven million dollar increase in foundation aid. We were expecting about a four and a half million dollar increase. So this was, this was larger than we expected, and, and it comes as, as particularly good news for us as we're continuing to spend our ARP and CURSA funding, and we're frankly worried about a funding cliff. While this, this increase will not completely offset the loss of federal funding over the next couple of years, it goes a long way toward, toward preserving the programs that were so important to investments have been made over the last couple of years. The other, the other big, you know, looking at building aid, I'm just gonna jump right down to building aid. The nine hundred thousand dollar reduction there is really just a timing of, as we're wrapping up projects and new projects are coming online. As, as our community knows, we've got a lot of activity and we anticipate that our building, it'll be higher than that once everything, the dust settle on all of our reporting that we're doing to the state, and we should know more before the budget is finalized. Universal pre-K is the other big number I wanted to just point out. Universal pre-K is going up by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that increase is, is huge for us. We were in the process of applying for a grant for additional UPK funding. This will allow us to fund as many as seventy-five more UPK students next year. So we're excited about that, and we'll start to work with our, our providers on that in the coming months. And let me just move this window. So when we look at, when we look at our, or, you know, heading into our tax cap, as we look at that, we start to think a little bit about inflation. As everybody knows, we've called this the two percent tax cap because it, it is, the primary driver is that you can increase your local tax levy by more than two percent or inflation, whichever is less. And I think we've talked about in our, in our earlier presentation that the CPIU is, is running well above that, actually six and a half for the percent for the twelve months ended December '22. So we are going to be driving our tax cap at the two percent level. And it's just important to, to point out that this is the second year in a row that we are significantly, inflation is significantly greater than the limitation of the cap, the tax cap. And that, that certainly puts some pressure, pressure on us as we put our budget together. Looking at the actual tax cap calculation, again, let me just move a few things out of the way here. So we start with, when we do the tax cap calculation, we start with last year's tax levy. And that was ninety-eight point five million dollars. And then there's this thing called the tax base growth factor. And the state publishes these rates to show if your tax base has grown, meaning there's more area for the district to cover, whether it be roads for the bus, buses to travel or, or, you know, different, different challenges within the, the district as a result of our tax base growing, they allow us to grow that, and our factor is one point zero zero seven four. So that, that increases the tax levy. I'm gonna talk a little bit about pilots. These are the pilot payments, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and ten. These are the pilot payments for the current year. We don't have a bead on our pilots for next year, and we're working on, on accumulating that information. So for purposes of this calculation, we're assuming that our pilots don't change, that, that will likely change between now and the time we finalize the tax cap. But just for everybody's benefit, the change in pilots, whenever there's an increase in pilots, that results in a lowering of the tax levy for our, our taxpayers. So any pilot payment is really just like a pass-through. The district collects the money and it reduces the local tax levy by that amount. The next line, tax levy for capital, what that is, that's our local share of capital projects over all time. Or, you know, all the projects we have going that are currently being paid for. This is the local share, and this looks at the change in the local share. And you'll see, that's one of the bigger components. If you look at the tax levy for capital '22-'23, then you go to the bottom half of the calculation, it shows the tax levy for capital '23-'24. And that, that number's gone up, and that's because the community has approved some projects, additional projects, since we last did the tax cap calculation. And then right in the center, the allowable levy growth factor is the two percent that I was referring to, to earlier. So when you process all those numbers, you get a tax levy limit of a hundred and two million or about three point five million dollars more than it was last year, or at this stage of the game, about three point five two percent. And I wanna, I wanna emphasize that this is a preliminary calculation. We have some additional work to do, certainly in the area of, of pilots. And we'll learn a little bit more about our tax levy for capital as we come down the home stretch, looking at all of our projects and the timing thereof. The estimated tax levy increase on a hundred thousand dollar home is one hundred thousand dollars. And before I go on to talk about federal stimulus funds, any questions on the state aid or the tax cap? Oh, wow, that's, thank you. Yeah, I retract my last statement, that the estimated tax levy increase on a home of a hundred thousand dollars is seventy-five dollars. I'm sorry, it's been a long day. Good, good catch, good catch. I was just seeing if you guys were listening. But seriously, before I talk about federal stimulus funds, any questions on the tax, the preliminary tax cap or the, 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 or the state aid? So federal stimulus funds, you know, we're, we've very fortunate to have had and are still benefiting from CURSA, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation, we've received, or we will be receiving seven point eight million dollars in total. And, and so that, those funds are, are providing supports, as indicated here, IIS Services, Instructional Support, SEL. And then we have the ARP, the ARP funding. And the ARP funding is, is eleven and a half million dollars, and that ARP funding is, you know, funds for spent for similar things, lost learning time. We are buying some furniture and equipment to better equip our schools. We're supporting any NSCEP. But by September of '24, we'll be done with ARP and CURSA. So we got another year of ARP, and we'll be finished up with CURSA by the end of this year. And so we will, we will be looking for ways to transition away from that. And the additional aid we got this year in foundation aid is certainly a, a big help for us. And as we navigate through this, we certainly welcome any feedback from the community or any, any stakeholder groups in terms of how we spend this money. Now onto a Micron update, Dan, did you wanna talk a little bit about Micron?
Absolutely. So today, we had the pleasure of a few individuals from Micron visit. They wanted to stop in to have a conversation with Jason Clark, who is coordinating chip camp. So chip camp will be June twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth for students in current grade seven, eight, and nine. So we did have a preliminary conversation with them, basically going over the district profile, how many students, staff, how many schools. And one of the things that, just trying to make sure they understand, we have districts and we're not a county-wide school system. And if you've ever been, maybe South or Midwest, that is what the understanding is. So if we were in a county-wide school system, every school in Anadaga County would be part of that, including the city. So having individual districts is a new understanding for them. So we did explain not only our, our, our local districts. They wanted to see the location or the site location of the Micron plant. So we did head up to the area up in, off of Route 31, Town of Clay area. But it's, again, the Micron plant is entirely in our district. So just so they had a better understanding, came down, they could see traffic, looked at the Micron plant in relationship to the high school and, and the canteen next to it. So just giving them a better understanding of the district and the makeup. So they really appreciated that, and we had just the opportunity to talk to them about not only the chip camp, but girls going tech is another thing that will be down the road. And hopefully, we can eventually move into something at the lower grades. And they have done something that I'm looking to explore called Chip Camp Junior, and it's for younger grade levels as well.
And that pretty much is our very brief update tonight. We're looking forward to sharing with you on February 27, the initial budget update. And our initial budget, I mean, and, and to give you a lot more detail on the budget. And then we'll work through the month of March with a final tax cap and, and more budget updates. And, and then in April, the first meeting in April, we're going to ask the board to approve the budget. So we've got a lot of work to do in the next six weeks, and we look forward to working with you on this. Any, any questions?
No questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Keegan.
Thank you.
Hey, we're at the comments from the audience portion. I don't see anybody signed up today. Just to let everybody know, as always, the Board of Education welcomes comments from the audience, from the community. We do set aside a chunk of time, we allot three minutes per speaker. So anytime, just sign up with our board clerk by Friday before our meetings. And we'd love, welcome to hear from you. You can always email us through our board clerk also. Board of Education Committee reports, I'll start, is there a report for policy, Mr. Warren?
Yes, thank you, Paul. Nothing at this time, our next policy committee meeting isn't until mid-March due to the February break.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crabtree, legislative, lots to talk about, right?
Would like you to talk too.
I will.
Awesome. We met on the sixth, last Wednesday. We had three of our legislators join us, all three of them join us. We asked them to talk about their priorities. I know that all the superintendents that got together in our, in our area and met with Al Sterpi, and I know we've met with Senator Mannion, but we wanted to know, the committee wanted to know some of their priorities. So real quickly, you know, Al Sterpi was very pleased with the governor's proposal. Very concerned. And I was really surprised that it's gonna be very difficult to get free breakfasts and lunches for our students through the state budget this year. And, you know, Mr. Crabtree will not give up on that, but I was interested, he mentioned that. Pam Hunter really liked some of her things, and we need to look at affordable housing in Central New York, potential development. And I'm not just talking about Micron. We have a lot of people in Central New York that can't afford to buy a home, and I think that's where her push is going to be. Yes, we have a lot of money that we can use for mental health, but where are the workers? We don't have the workers to step in and do that. And the other one, Pam Hunter just gets me thinking all the time, but the one thing is, get ready for migrant workers. I guess Texas doesn't want them, or Florida, and they're gonna be, start coming up here. And we need to think about them just not going to New York City. We need to think about them coming to Central New York. Senator Mannion has a big concern about charter schools, as, as does our whole committee. Very pleased with the expansion of UPK. Also, he has a concern, and both he and Mr. Mannion have support forty-four-ten for school funding. And that was about it. But I thought it was interesting that we got a chance to hear what they felt, not only educational things. So Paul, Matt, or Xavier, is there anything that you would like to add to what was said?
No, I, I mean, I would add, I don't know if I should do it here or later, what we, what we talked about, you and I and Mr. Keegan and Mr. Bowles. Saturday, we saw them again.
Talk about that a little bit.
Okay.
And open, but.
I'll do that.
From the meeting with that the other day?
I'll comment about that, the board comment part, but yeah.
Xavier, anything? No, okay. So our next meeting will be March first. I will be able to begin the meeting, but I have something in this room that night. Our president won't be there, so Matt has volunteered to carry through the meeting. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Just to comment on something you said, Mr. Crabtree, I'm disappointed that they're not gonna do more for the school lunches, especially after the data shows that our students are not eating compared to when we were offering them those meals. I'm really surprised that's not a priority.
I'll come back and say, Al Sterpi also, and he said this on Saturday, but I'll say it because it goes with what you said, is that it will be every superintendent that he met with, this is a big priority. It's, I'm not saying it's Al Sterpi or the, it's the governor does not have that in there. We need to probably go back to our federal government and talk to Ms. Jill DeBrand and Mr. Schumer. I know they're very supportive of this, that maybe we need to do something federally.
Right, I think the comment was made that this was a federal program, and now it's being dumped on the states to sustain it.
Mr. Crabtree, is there any way we could, like, get a letter, like, compiled to send to our federal legislators for New York in order to advocate for this? Because I know that was a big point, was it's not really at the state level at this point, it's all on the federal government because they started it, so they have to start it up again.
I think we can work on that, I think that's a great idea. I know that all, most of you have been bombarding the state. I mean, Al Sterpi and, and Ms. Hokel and all them have heard from us, but now it's time to, to do it. So let me work on that and bring it back to the committee and talk about that. Thanks, that's a great idea.
Also on that subject, wondering if it's possible, since we do have communications amongst the superintendents, that we get numbers together. If we're gonna go on a federal level, then let's get every Anadaga County school we can, rural school, get those numbers of pre-pandemic kids who are eating and pandemic kids that are eating. Because those numbers, when we saw that report, were staggering.
Well, at that point, we can probably all, if, if we could get a draft resolution together that could allow districts to fill in the blank, just a non-binding resolution saying that we support this. I think that'd go a long way if we got all of, all the districts within our BOCs to collaborate on that. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, Superintendent Bowles.
Thank you. On Friday, as everyone knows, we used our first inclement weather day. It was not a snow day, but a cold day. We ended up closing the evening before, not something we typically do, but the, the forecast was so overwhelming that we did close schools. We did have an issue with, in one area, there was a, there was a frozen heat coil that we did find. So in those times, we don't want students walking, whether it be going to the bus stops or after they get off of school. So that's why we closed. And again, the negative temperatures by the end of the day with the wind chill was between twenty and thirty below. On Saturday, we did have students attend at Ithaca NISM A states, seventeen CNS students placed in either band, orchestra, or chorus. So we were well-represented, and again, our students in the arts are doing extremely well. We've also had some students in bowling, Nehemiah Bachman and Jacob Calabria also have qualified for the states for bowling, and they've been top five for high gamed and also in the top ten. We also, again, our phenomenal runner Kate Putman, again, ran a mile in four minutes, forty-five point nine zero seconds, and then was first in the thousand meter for two minutes and fifty-three seconds. She's just setting records all over the place, and I believe she's going to run at NC State when she attends college. So we, we do have a lot of things going on. Our students in many different areas are doing extremely well and continue to watch them as they progress the rest of their season. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Bowles. Board of Education comments. I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and, excuse me, start. It was just along the legislative lines, just wanted to mention that I, and I, the only ones I could see, I know Bob was there. We had a Central New York School Board's Legislative Forum, Mr. Keegan was there, Mr. Bowles, myself, several other superintendents and board members from around the area. It was done virtually, they've done it virtually the last few years. They promised us they'll consider back in person going forward. As Mr. Crabtree said, as the legislators articulated at our legislative meeting, they're very pleased with the governor's budget. You, you know, you can't be anything but pleased with the amount of money, but there are things that are worth talking about. I mean, we sit here and you heard in Mr. Keegan's presentation about our federal money, the CURSA, the American Recovery Plan money that will be exhausted. The programs we've added to help our students get to where they need to be post-pandemic. That money ends, and we need to sustain the programs. So here we sit with a, a great budget to help us do that, but we sit with a four percent tax caps, not tax cap, sorry, fund balance limit still, which has been there for I don't know how many years, which would be nice to be able to put aside some of this. We have building aid issues where our maximum cost allowances are still limited to where we can only do so much with our renovations that we need. The tax cap, there's a lot of talk about the tax cap and some amendments that need to be made to that. And Dr. Rick Timms, which maybe some of you have heard before, gives a presentation every year. And he did talk a lot about now that we've gotten to where we need to be with foundation aid. Granted, I'll say that, but also say, all the money that we were supposed to get over the years, we're not gonna get, but we're caught up now as far as where we were supposed to be. But we have this foundation aid formula that needs a serious look at, and all the, all the legislators agreed with that. He talked about a blue ribbon panel to really take a look at it as something that would be, that would evolve over time, it would not go away. We'd have to revisit this formula over and over again because of how things change. So it was, it was interesting, there was, and I'll, and I'll end here. So it was, it was interesting. Uh, there was, and I'll, and I'll end here. I just, I found it. You gotta be careful how I say this. Interesting but annoying, uh, the discussion around the timelines for electric school buses. Because it's my belief the timelines are a bit aggressive. I understand why they are and I do appreciate that. And, and I did hear from at least Al Sterpy that he believed that they're aggressive for a reason to push the technology, but also that there would be safety valves down the road, road that would make common sense out of it. Uh, hopefully are some common sense solutions to that. I hope to see that because I, what is it, Mr. Keegan, twenty-twenty-seven, we won't be able to, and given the current legislation, we wouldn't be able to buy any more gasoline buses. Yeah, I, I, I did think it got, you know, we're there to talk about educational issues for our students, for our communities. And I, I thought some of it got a little political uh, over that issue and one of the legislators referenced the war on fossil fuels and uh, the bleeding of citizens from New York State, which we, we, there's not a lot of data to support some of the things I heard and talked about crime. I thought those are talking points that weren't really appropriate for that venue, but I guess he felt he needed to get those in. We were talking about a piece of legislation and how we're stuck with that and help us work through it, please. I, I, that's just me, so I'll stop there. Thank you. I did a little rant on the chat. I hope I didn't embarrass anybody from North Syracuse, but oh. I, I just, you know, I want to hear, you know, hear our issues and I didn't think some of the buzzwords and talking points that come out of uh, what I've seen on social media and such needed to be in that venue. So I'm done. Any other comments from the board? We will be seeing them again. Uh, we, Bob and I will be participating in the New York State School Boards uh, has a lobby uh, education day and I do have some lobby appointments with some of them later on next week. So we'll continue to thank them, of course, but then try and look for a little fixes to help us sustain what we've, what we've built here that we should be proud of going forward. Thank you.
I do have, uh, another thing we've been working on through the Policy Committee with the Subcommittee is to looking towards students, the possibility of having them have involvement on the board um, in some fashion that is both legally allowed, effective for the children, um, something that's said commonly amongst the attendees where it would be a great educational experience for the kids. And we're just trying to figure out how to do that most appropriately. Unfortunately, Bob, I'm not sure if it's going to happen this year, but uh, we're, we're definitely working on some solutions that are best for all involved.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Of course. Um, as Paul said, there will be a virtual capital conference uh, this Friday from eight-thirty to twelve-forty-five. Uh, Paul and I both did it last year, attended it. It's excellent because it includes everybody. It includes NICID, it includes, there'll be students leading it. Uh, it includes uh, a look at the governor's proposal and people from the governor's office. I see that we're going to hear the undersecretary of, of, of education for the state. It's excellent. I am unable to go with you on um, Paul's actually going to Albany um, to meet with um, to meet with legislators. Um, one other thing is being the representative of BOCs uh, and both Doc, or Doctor Senator Mannion and Al Sterpy pushed for the CTE re-reimbursements. There's no way that we're paying thirty-five thousand dollars to teachers to teach a class on welding or on engineering. Uh, that is the amount of money that we're allowed and that needs to be pushed to sixty-five thousand. Listen, if we're looking at Micron and we're looking at trades, we, uh, we need to grow BOCs and we need to have more students from this district, but we need more money. Um, and she didn't approve it last year. So we want to look at that. Um, you know, I always say it on the DM, but I listened to you first. A wrestling team. Uh, as you know, they won the division for the first time ever uh, in Sisro North Syracuse's history. Well, they went on this weekend and won the sectionals. And I think they're almost, all of the wrestlers are going to make it to the regionals. That is amazing. Something, you know, I keep saying we shouldn't be going to some events next Wednesday. Uh, at the junior high, seven o'clock, the CNS and North Syracuse Junior High Bands get together. It is an amazing concert. I haven't seen it in years, but it's when you have all the students from eight through twelve do, uh, do a concert. Uh, apologize for um, Friday. Maybe I don't because it was a wonderful day to stay in and do things in the house. Uh, our OCM BOCs tour, which uh, five of us were going to go um, will be reschedule. Um, I think Dan and Colleen and, and so forth will reschedule that. Some of my concerns, because I always bring up concerns. I know that this board is looking at um, some kind of tax exemption for firefighters. We've had people here for two meetings and I know we're still discussing that. I have a concern about the seniors in this, in this um, in this district. I gave, uh, there was an article in yesterday's paper where a senior told he's not going to get any extra money. These are people, ladies and gentlemen, that are making under ten thousand dollars. And they don't get an exemption. I have a friend from church. Eighty-three years old, God bless him. Uh, he's in the Phoenix School District and Towne Clay has turned him down twice. He goes with his car and gets scraps so he could take it to the junkyard to get money. This is just one story that is happening in this community, you know. Um, I have no, nothing against firefighters. They, you know, save lives. I had a fire in my house. They saved my house. But our seniors are hurting in this community and all you have to do is get in your car and take a little ride around uh, Maddie Dale, Cicero, Towne Clay, you know, anywhere. And we need, uh, maybe it's not the school district, but the community's got to help these people. So that's just my uh, concern about that. And then last but not least, I brought this up at BOCs and asked other school districts. There is not another school district saying virtual um, subcommittees. They're all in person. It's wonderful to have them virtually, especially when I can have Senator Mannion come. But the committee that I, I work with Terry with, there's five of us. I like to be in person and see people's real faces and their expressions. So I think this um, I know it's, uh, Jill's looked into it, it's legal, but I think in-person uh, committees is where we need to go. That's the personal. And that's the end for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question. Uh, so with, with Micron, I know the Carpenter's Union on Buckley Road is expa- is expanding. They're putting four million dollars into expanding the training center. I'm sure they have a relationship with BOCs. Have we reached out in any capacity to see if there's anything that we might be able to do with them as well?
I saw that on the news and uh, we have not at this time, but uh, I did connect with Micron about some of the things that they can leverage with BOCs to increase some of the trades and that was a big part of our conversation today.
I, I know it just came out the other day. I just want to make sure that we're taking advantage of trying to build a relationship there in some capacity. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to routine action items and look for a motion to approve the minutes of our January twenty-third meeting motion from Dr. Kramer, sec from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, those are carried. Thank you. If I get a motion to group B, C, and D together, please, a motion from Ms. Kruger, sec from Mr. Thorne. They are the classification of stable students for school for preschool and for home instruction from the various committees that is before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, that is carried. And a motion to acknowledge a business reports, business office reports for December, a motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. They are before us. There are six of them. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, that is carried. Okay, discussion action items, resolution to approve purchases Sisro Elementary School boilers as an emergency need, motion from Mr. Crabtree, sec from Mr. Marizio. That is before us. You read about that in our Friday letters. Do we have any questions about that? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, that is carried. Thank you very much. That's very necessary. B, motion, please put that before us, resolution, resolution to approve the BOCs lease agreement, motion from Mr. Thorne, sec from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, that is carried. And the resolution to create a one-point-oh full-time equivalent licensed practical nurse at Roxboro Elementary, motion from Dr. Kramer, sec from Mr. Moody Wuzik. That is before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, and that is carried. And we have our declaration of marketable and non-marketable surplus. Motion place that before us, motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Dr. Kramer. That is before us, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, and that is carried. And a motion to amend the appointment of our school physicians, motion to place that before us, motion from Dr. Kramer, sec from Mr. Thorne. You have that list. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, and that is carried. And put on your seat belts. Bear with me. Better get a drink of water for this one. Not bigger since I've read it. We have our retirements to acknowledge. So I'd like to read those um, in their positions in how many years, which is staggering. So the, the, now the, uh, these retirements will be in our personnel reports A, B, and C today. Maria Andraco, teaching assistant retiring with thirty-nine point three years of service. Nancy Becerra, elementary teacher retiring with thirty-four years of service. Julie Henderson, elementary teacher retiring with thirty years of service. Gail Lucasick, and you have to excuse me with the names. My name was butchered my whole life, so I feel like I should get a pass, but I do my best. Gail's a teaching assistant retiring with thirteen point six years of service. Venus Santangelo, that's an easy one to pronounce for me, physical education teacher with twenty-seven point five years of service. Michelle Hapanowicz, school nurse retiring with twenty years of service. Darcy Bodern, music teacher retiring with thirty-two point seven years of service. Alicia Erickson, science teacher retiring with thirty-three point six years of service. Kim Lincoln-Hogger, science teacher retiring with twenty-three years of service. Shirley Newmeister, science teacher retiring with twenty-three years of service. Tricia Robinson, science teacher retiring with thirty-two point six years of service. I am certified in science, by the way, secondary. Linda Sammons, math teacher retiring with thirty-five years of service. Beth Spencer, special education teacher retiring with twenty-two years of service. Bonnie Marini, school psychologist retiring with twenty-one years of service. Marcia Lemerande, school psychologist retiring with twenty years of service. Lemerand, Lemerand. Thank you. Carol Gaynor, social studies teacher retiring with forty-one years of service. I believe she's here with her entourage this evening. Forty-one years, and she's only forty-three. That's impressive. Astounding. John Downs, elementary school teacher retiring with thirty-one years of service. Diana Carr, teaching assistant retiring with twenty-nine years of service. Elaine Dogard, school bus attendant retires with twenty-two point five years of service. Jane Witosik, school nurse retiring with twenty-one point five years of service. Valerie DeFlorio, executive director of Prespor, purpose, pupil personnel, excuse me, retires with nineteen point eight years of service and Felicia Viscom. English teacher retiring with thirty-five years of service. Wow. And Mr. Marizio did the math. That's six hundred and seventeen point one years of service now.
I'm, I'm just going to go back and give Mr. Farfali an assist and I believe it's Kim Link, Lincoln Holker.
Is she here?
No.
Okay. Give her my, give her my, again, my name, my whole life has been butchered sometimes on purpose. So I, I, I am, I feel and I'm sorry I did, you know, but yeah, that, that's I, I don't have words. I mean, we, we look at that total number and, and people like to do that, but uh, that's that's a lot. That's a lot to, to digest. Uh, I mean, I look at the four sciences in a row and, and I saw that when I looked at this agenda earlier and it staggered and, and I know there's a shortage. This is, this is going to be tough and this is happening all over, not just New York, but all over. So um, yeah, well, we'll get new people, but I, I tell you, I was, I was an old person in this profession and uh, we learn really fast, like next September, there are a lot of things that these folks do automatically that you don't have to ask them to do that all of a sudden you realize you're missing and it's, it's a big, big hole. That's, and I'll, and I'll move on now to. Well, you, you should, some of you anyway, if you, if you'd like to. And you can pick and choose. You can bring Mr. Cleary too. He's ready. So now we're going to accept some of these uh, and, and A and then B and C and we'll, we'll accept all of them when we're done. So a motion to put instructional personnel report A before us, motion from Mr. Thorne, sec from Mr. Marizio, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, that is carried. We've accepted those as both sports staff personnel's report B, a motion place that before us, motion Mr. Woody Wuzik, sec from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, and that is carried. And administrative personnel report C, a motion place that before us. Motion from Ms. Kruger, sec from Mr. Herman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, and that is carried. Thank you very much. I'm going to make a motion for executive session. I'll ask for a second. The motion is to move into session for the purpose of reviewing four legal matters with no action to follow and to review one personnel matter with no action to follow. So ask for a second, sec from Mr. Marizio, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, that is carried. And a motion for adjournment. Motion of Ms. Marizio, sec from Mr. Thorne, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, we are adjourned. Thank you. Six forty-seven.